Martin?
Here.
John Mungy?
Here.
Patrick Lees?
Here.
Eric Brenner?
Here.
Rick Gelbman? Cameron Muick is not here. He has an excused absence tonight. Andrew Weiss?
Here.
And we have Commissioner Liaison Lisa Wong.
Here.
Hey, thank you. We have a quorum then. Since this is a special meeting, we have one item on the agenda, so unless anybody has anything that they specifically wanted to mention under, you know, business items, we'll just accept the agenda as presented. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion?
No.
Nope?
Then we'll move on to a meeting open to the public, and I do have one comment form from John Schmal about tonight's meeting. John?
This is a rare occasion. It hasn't happened since the bus garage. Does anybody remember the bus garage? One person remembers the bus garage. Anyway, this particular meeting, it is confusing as to how we got here. There's the HRA, and there's the council, and there's the planning commission. And who started what when? And when the council failed to have the supermajority, it ended up in your lap. So normally, HRA to council, supermajority says, "We don't care about the planning commission," on it goes, right? Is that correct?
I have no idea. But your point?
Put me... Now, I'm just a citizen. You guys, this is the, you know, the best and the brightest in front of me that should understand how this procedure works. I have no clue. But something went wrong when a supermajority was not available on the council. Is that correct?
I don't know. I didn't see the meeting or the discussion, John.
At the council?
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Well, you couldn't... Well, that's another thing. Prior to the HRA meeting for which there were, I guess, minutes, there were two super-secret double-probation meetings, which the public was not allowed to attend, correct?
John, I would say that the planning commission doesn't have that knowledge. We are working as a team the best that we can. As you know, we've gone through some staff changes over the year, and so we are encountering some difficult times. They're all volunteers. We're all doing the best that we can.
And I'm doing the best I can to ask questions.
It was brought to my attention that this meeting does need to happen for any sales acquisitions or anything related to the EDA or the Housing Redevelopment Authority, the HRA. So with that being said, going forward, that is the plan. What's happened in the past, I understand, is you're correct that the bus garage was the one and only time this happened. So tonight, we're going to review what's in front of us, and the planning commission will make a recommendation that we'll go back to the HRA. And I have provided a copy of the state statute to everybody so that we're aware of what we need to do going forward.
That's all well and good. That's a nice explanation, but didn't answer my question. Were... Is this in your lap at this time because of a failure to get a supermajority at the last council?
What I'll need to find out is if that supermajority... Right now, I'm under the understanding that the HRA, whatever the governing body is that's making that decision, has the power for that, whether it be council, HRA, or EDA. If there's a four-to-one vote, if I'm correct, this is something we need to find out. But that's my understanding. If there's a four-to-one vote that it can pass, bypass the planning commission, then so be it. So I don't know if the procedure, the policy, is to go from HRA to council and they make... if they're the superpower, or if that governing body, the HRA, actually has the power to do that. So that I will find out, and I'll let you know.
Well, it would be the... Actually, it would be the body who is proposing, who's going to fund the purchase, essentially.
Okay, so that would be the HRA.
So in this case, it sounds like it was the HRA, and Lisa probably could better explain that. Is that the extent of your...
Oh, no, 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 no.
Because, you know, why don't you get to the rest of them then?
Okay. As I said, there were two super-secret meetings that the public could not attend that were held by the HRA. And I am curious as to why, now that it's in the open, the negotiations are completed, it only needs the paperwork, why aren't the minutes for those super-secret meetings in the packet? Because they can be released to the public now.
Well, again, you would need to clarify that, I suppose, with staff, because we don't have anything to do with the council or the HRA minutes.
So I come here to look at this, to ask a question, because you need all this information too. I would imagine the minutes to the super-secret meetings in order to make a decision tonight, or not?
No.
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 No, what we are assessing tonight is compliance with the comprehensive plan for the purchase. Not... We're not doing anything more than that. We're not looking at our code or making a recommendation to approve or deny anything.
So...
We're taking a step backwards.
What the HRA did before us, really, you know, we don't need that information in order to make our assessment.
So if you would look at it and say, "They paid too much for this. This is ridiculous. You're not interested." You don't feel... Not in your...
Well, it's not normally something we're going to discuss.
It's not something you would discuss?
Yeah.
It's not our responsibility.
I mean, that's not our job to negotiate.
Oh, so this meeting can be done in about three seconds? Because there's no questions on your part?
Well, there might be questions, John.
But it would have nothing to do with whether due diligence was exercised in finding whether there is hazardous waste. A building this old is going to have an octopus furnace. It's going to have asbestos. But you're not concerned about not doing that prior to the purchase? If, in fact, that has happened, then let the city deal with that after the fact.
We're not concerned with the negotiation process between the HRA and whoever the seller is. That's correct.
Nothing. No concern whatsoever.
We're looking for, would this use be, you know, compatible or consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Or that other properties exist at this time that could be used for the student build?
I don't know. Any more ways I can say it, John?
You're not interested in...
We are looking at this particular item. And again, let's... I think we've answered the question.
And so you're prohibited from making...
They give it to us. We look at it. We look, see if it fits our plan. If it fits our plan, it's okay. We don't go through the back end of it. It gets to us.
Okay.
Yeah, we're starting over, trying to do it right. So it comes to the planning commission will go to HRA next week, depending on what their recommendation is. Actually, the recommendation will go to HRA.
So the document in here that's supposed to have been signed by the prior city manager is not up to date? It's just something to give you an idea of what the resolution looks like?
I included everything in the last packet for the HRA meeting when I created the packet. So that was the... Everything in that, with the exception of a few additional photos, was what was in the HRA packet from the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John. Anything from either of the two gentlemen way in the back?
Nope, just here for support if needed.
Okay, thank you. All righty, then, let's go on to our business action item is to consider a purchase agreement for 2170 Eldridge Avenue for the student-built house program. So Lisa's going to go through her information?
Brandy had a conflict with the schedule tonight, so she's not able to present this. I thought that we could get through it and with the plan to bring it back to the HRA meeting next week, whatever your recommendation is. So as we've already noted, the HRA is tasked with purchasing vacant or blighted and/or substandard homes for redevelopment. Unfortunately, we have apparently been bypassing the step of it going to the planning commission prior to the HRA for a number of years. So we have been asked to write what's wrong, for lack of better terms, but we're starting over. We're presenting to you the information, and then from here, we'll go back to the HRA, and based on your recommendation, they'll go from there. Elaine summed it up exactly with the fact that we are reviewing the proposal of the purchase of 2170 Eldridge Avenue to ensure that it is in alignment with the 2040 comp plan. So that's what our goal is tonight. And as I already mentioned, in the packet, what I included, because this all came together at the last minute, and we're trying to do what we can, I included everything that was in the HRA packet in the last meeting for reference, finding out after the fact, of course, that none of the dollar amount is not anything that you would consider, but I wanted to try to provide as much information that I had access to that I could in case it would be needed. So I think primarily in the packet, the resolution that it was adopted, we can void that. There's no real reference. We've already discussed how that came to be. And then we go into the purchase agreement. Here again, that doesn't pertain to what you need to consider. But what I think is going to be important is, in the last part of the packet here, I have included the information... Well, first of all, the state statute. So I provided a copy of that to everybody just so that you're aware of what the state statute reads. And it was... This email that I received was from Soren, our city attorney. And yes, that's how this all played out, is somebody brought it to the attorney's attention and said, "Shouldn't this be a requirement?" And Soren's response was, "Yes, and here's the statute." So that's how that information came to be. And then I've also included the parcel ID information. So you may recall this property from a previous meeting that we had back in January. A developer gave a presentation of what he was proposing, and it was kind of a futuristic-looking building. And I know that we had a big turnout from the public hearing, and I think there was a lot of opposition, primarily based on the design. I know your concern, of course, wasn't the design, but the fact that the requirements weren't met for you to grant the variance that he was looking for. So Brandy Howe did provide an alternative route for him, and to be honest, this whole process has been in the works since last August. So after that happened, some more time went by, and then knowing that we are looking for a property, it was John Stark's recommendation that this property is available. And also the fact that we've had the student-built housing for a number of years, this parcel could be subdivided into two properties. So with that being said, you know, if we had the opportunity for the student-built housing next year as well, that would be there. And I think I'm going off on a rampage here, and that really doesn't apply to our 2040 comp plan. But what we're going to ask you to consider is to evaluate that parcel ID, what it is, the evaluation of the photos, if you determine that the property is substandard or blighted, and if it does, in fact, align with what we're looking for in our comp plan. Okay?
John has a question?
I'm just at... Just what you brought up, maybe, you know, as far as when you were talking, is it's two parcels?
It is... It's actually one parcel that could be divided.
Are we going to divide that, in case it's student housing? Maybe next year, they want to do it. If they don't, it can be sold as another piece of land, or is that... What is...
Correct. I don't think... I don't...
How is that being set up to be... Is the house going to be far enough over, so it is going to be two lots?
Yes, because this property with the intention of the... If the student-built house, I know that it's documented in John's memo that the potential for a student-built house, it could be subdivided in the lots. The difference between this and what we were looking at in January is the fact that the previous owner, or actually, the current owner, was looking at building on the existing foundation. So the... I believe the student-built house would be a complete demolition and rebuild. So Elaine, if I... If this is something we shouldn't be discussing, please let me know.
Well, it's not necessarily... What might happen with the two lots isn't necessarily the most important criteria. But I do think, if I recall, that the prior... Or the... Back in January, I'll put it that way. When we looked at that plan, that was also subdividing into three lots. And so one of the issues was, one of them was going to be substandard. This way, you know, if you... The plan would be to subdivide it equally, then you've got two standard-sized lots, which are certainly buildable without variances or any of that kind of hurdle, so to speak, to get over.
That price seems a little more reasonable for two lots.
Yeah, so I guess my take on this particular one is what our concern really is is as we think about the housing goals that are in the comprehensive plan, does this further them? And, you know, I think it goes without saying that we want housing, obviously, and we don't want dilapidated housing. We'd prefer not to have that. And the only thing that occurred to me, and I was looking through the comprehensive plan, is we also want affordable housing. So... And you all maybe can think about this, but I don't know if there's a way to word any particular input that we give to the council or to the HRA. I have to keep remembering it's the HRA that's acting on this, to pursue, you know, the affordability piece going forward, because I don't think this is going to be affordable once the building is done. And so when, you know, somebody asked about the price, that only factors in from just an assessment of the affordability piece. Doesn't mean every home that's built needs to be affordable, but that's really the primary goal of the HRA, I think. So again, we need to provide something in writing to the council regarding, you know, compliance with the comprehensive plan. So I think we can pull a few things out as far as what the goals are. And certainly, the resolution itself, you know, talks about the dilapidated housing. So I was just thinking, potentially, there's a way to reference going forward.
Okay.
As the HRA pursues various properties. And that would even apply to anybody who's thinking of buying properties.
Sure.
Particularly because we've done a lot of apartments, and we actually have gotten, what, twenty-some affordable units in the new apartments?
We do.
But we haven't managed to do anything with housing, single-family housing. So that would be my input, if we can word something, maybe help Lisa put something together, because she would have to present it next week already.
Yeah, and I'll work with Brandy on that.
But your thoughts?
I think it's worthwhile, you know, talking about the affordable housing affects the single-family homes.
Yeah.
You know, that's important, and to some degree, the previous proposal was doing that, but it didn't meet, you know, meet the...
Could you turn on your microphone?
The previous proposal didn't meet the zoning standards, whereas this one would, obviously, especially with the, you know, property width of sixty feet. I assume it's in the middle.
I think if... Could we word our recommendation in such a way as to, shall we say, encourage affordability?
That's what I'm thinking.
I think that's...
You know, the going forward.
That's the way to...
Kind of thing.
To word it.
And even on this particular one, as affordable as it can be done, so to speak. And again, that's not even known yet, I don't think, but...
In some, you know, with the student housing or student-built housing, you know, that's kind of a piece of that puzzle.
Right. Mm-hmm. It should help.
Assumption or the reasoning behind it.
There's land we have in North St. Paul that we own already.
Yeah.
Seventeenth over there, that's could be for future, you know, twin homes.
Going forward.
Yes, and I think there was some discussion on that. We do have...
But again, let's not get into...
That, okay.
You know, let's focus on this piece, because that's really what we're here to do, and we don't want to get too far down. We certainly can have that discussion, but probably not now.
Would it be appropriate... We have Eric, the principal from the 916 program for the student-built housing. Do you have any comments regarding affordability for the programming?
Well, and again, I think particularly as it relates to potentially this particular one.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Eric Leat. I am the proud assistant principal at the 916 Career and Tech Center. So I'm the administrator for the construction occupation programs that builds the house. So all of our student labor is free. They can do the framing, and then our instructor, Tom, who couldn't be here today, he is sorry, he gets a lot of the products and materials donated, whether it's the countertops, St. Paul, the St. Paul College Cadantry Program does build and donate all of the cabinets for the house also. And the interior design students from Century College design all of the fixtures, and having a budget for them sets that price where it is. Having said that, so the house that will go there next year, that we're thinking now, would be the exact same house plan that we're building on Nineteenth Street.
That looks beautiful.
Okay, so it's the exact same house plan, and then next to that would be the exact same house plan also.
Okay.
So, nice one level, so it can be convenient for handicap or whatever people need to be in it?
Yeah, and it's four bedrooms, so there's two on the main level, and then two downstairs.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Appreciate your coming.
Yeah, no problem.
Anybody have any questions? No?
I know. I just was going to say, it sounds great. I'm really happy that you guys would be involved in this. It's super-important just for, you know, our local economy to have people knowledgeable and being able to build things correctly, and there's less and less younger people that, you know, are doing that right now, and hopefully, we can, you know, keep more of that moving forward. So thank you for doing that. Yeah, I think it's a great... It would be a great fit. I live right down the street, so I'd be happy to have, you know, like, it fits into the help of trying to get a little bit more density in some of these larger lots. And it would be great. I hope it goes through.
Okay. Also, there's an open house on July 13th, Wednesday, July 13th, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. I will send that to you, Lisa, so you can come see this year's house.
Okay.
Very nice. It's old VAS.
Anybody else? Thank you.
I would just echo that I live right across the street from one of your guys' houses that you built. Same situation. It was a tear-down, and you guys built a new house, and it's a young family living there. It's awesome. It improved the view outside my front door tremendously, so big supporter of your guys' program. I think you guys do good work, so...
And it's such a win-win-win, I think, you know, for the people that own it, for the city, and for the students that are learning a trade. That's fantastic.
Yeah, I've always thought it was a good partnership to do that kind of thing. So thank you for coming. So again, how would we... How would you recommend something be worded? So Lisa can do her wordsmithing, working with Brandy. I mean, obviously, like I say, the dilapidated piece. And we don't want dilapidated properties. Go ahead.
I think it'd be worthwhile to start off with, yes, it is compatible with the comprehensive plan and our zoning regulations as a starting point. And then beyond that, I think, talking about both the affordable housing component.
Well, if... Just to start out, I think it never hurts to actually reference what's in the comprehensive plan. So I'll just refer you to... I happen to have mine with me, as you might expect. Chapter fifteen, page five, has our housing goals. And one of them is enhance neighborhood value with quality housing options and types at all price points. So that's one of them, and that's certainly, you know, I think, one of the things that this plan is certainly compatible with that, particularly getting away, you know, getting rid of something that truly is not in good shape.
I think we should express agreement with that assessment of the property.
Well, that's... Yes, yeah.
That our statement should express agreement with that.
Well, that's the neighborhood value piece.
Yeah.
But it's also adding, you know, a mixture of options. But the other one, and it is really, it gets to the naturally recurring affordable housing and finding creative ways to provide affordable housing. And those are a couple of the goals in there that I think, for going forward, is to try to focus on those. So certainly, working with the school district, just making that one of the goals, as well as the project, to bring it in as affordably as possible.
Sure.
But I do think it pays when you're doing... Is it compliant with the comp plan? You really do need to pull out some of the comp plan goals to make that finding.
Thank you, yes.
So that's what I was just trying to encourage. I could share my comp plan with everyone. There aren't a whole lot of goals on the housing page. It's very interesting, because they all relate to the same kind of thing, options, price, you know, all price points, different styles. So anything else that you think we should bring out in the... In our findings, so to... Because that's really all we need to do, is, you know, make our... Give our opinion on compatibility.
Nothing to add, no disagreement?
Nope.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Lisa?
Yes, and just to capture what we've discussed, I will, as I mentioned, work with Brandy to come up with the appropriate wording for this, but I'll note that it is compatible with the zoning regulations, chapter five, or chapter fifteen, page five.
Yes, that's the comp plan.
The comp plan.
That's the comp plan.
Comp plan.
We don't know if it's... You know, zoning, yes, it's certainly...
Oh, okay.
That's single-family housing there.
Okay.
And the lot sizes, if they do choose to split, it would be compatible.
I mean, our assumption will be that it's going to be split.
Split down the middle.
So that, you know, both will be...
I do have a question. I thought I read somewhere, and maybe it was the documentation, Lisa, that you gave us. I thought I read that it was actually three forty-foot lots.
It probably is.
Currently.
Tied. It probably is.
Because there are forty-foot lots. That was the standard platting.
Yeah.
Actually, I do see on the bottom of page nineteen of twenty-one, FYI, neighboring lots are... Actually, I do see on the bottom of page 19 of 21, FYI, neighboring lots are approximately 40 feet wide.
Right, and I think this is three 40-foot lots.
Yeah, it was.
If we look at...
I think.
Oh, yeah.
I think.
So if we look at this.
Because they were all plotted that way.
So there would ultimately be a subdivision process.
Yeah, into two.
To combine and make two lots out of it.
Yeah. Most of the properties are tied. Here's mine, and I get a chunk in this one and a chunk of that one.
It used to not be tracked and replatted.
Exactly. Yeah.
People just built on whatever, over whatever property lines they owned.
So go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. And you're all in agreement with the current property being in substandard condition, and this would be an enhancement to...
Well, it's visually, yes. It visually looks dilapidated. I don't know if you'd call it substandard and build, but it's not visually attractive.
Especially with small rooms. That's what I'm looking at.
All right, and then the last note indicating that it's going to be important to find creative ways to provide affordable housing going forward in there.
And again, I would encourage the HRA to, when they're working with the developer, to consider the affordability as plans are produced and okayed.
Okay.
I mean, that's... That would be my way of putting it, I guess.
So the hoopla that came through, the way this came through this time, was it the new city manager that looked and said, "Yeah"?
No, it was a council member.
Oh, council member.
Mm-hmm.
It's been kind of a lagging issue for a while.
Was it?
So you're good?
Yep.
And again, if you want, you can reference page 5, if you want to pull out the actual wording on a couple of them. But like I say, I reviewed it again, because I remember we had a lot of discussion about affordable housing when we were doing the comp plan. How many... I can't even remember who was here when we did that chapter, but there was a lot of discussion about that, because we do have, as does every city around us, a sizable portion of cost-burdened households.
Mm-hmm.
And it's getting more and more expensive, as we all know. So, anyway. I think... I don't believe we need... Well, let's vote on that, just to be legal. How's that?
Well, but what are we voting on?
On that, our findings.
That outline?
Yes, our findings, that will be...
I'd be happy to make a motion to follow that proposal.
And I would second it for you.
All right. I have a motion by Patrick and a second by John. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we've got that done. So...
I get paid by the vote.
No, I just said wonderful.
Oh. Then, we don't actually have any other business, so unless anybody has any reports they want to make, I know we meet next week.
Can I make mention of an event?
Sure.
That's going to occur on Thursday?
Sure.
For those who are interested, the Wreaths Across America Mobile Truck is going to be in town.
Right.
Over by the vets park.
Right.
And we...
Do you know the hours?
I should.
Eight to four, I think.
Eight to four?
What is that?
It's pretty much all day. The Wreaths Across America, which is an organization that we've... Carrie and I have... My wife, Carrie and I have participated several years at holiday time, Christmas time. They place wreaths on vet graves. And so we volunteer and we go to the Fort Snelling Cemetery, and when they're finished, every grave has a wreath on it. It's very cool.
So what's the actual event?
Basically, it's publicity about what they do.
Okay.
More than anything else, but there's a lot of bits and pieces.
Yeah.
There's stuff for families to do.
Right. Okay. Good. Thanks.
And there is an article on the website, if you're interested in getting a little bit more information, or you could contact Carrie Urbanbach, our communication specialist as well.
Carrie and Carrie.
Carrie and Carrie.
Have been working together very well.
Were you going to say something, Eric?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they just wanted to mention? Lisa? Lisa, Lisa?
Lisa first.
No, go ahead. Okay.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank everyone for their patience. We are having staff changes. As you know, our city manager has resigned, and so we're in the search for one now. We already have some applicant, at least one applicant, and I think we should have someone by August, is our hope. But yeah, again, I apologize for the confusion here. This was something that we were hoping the community development position would kind of clear the air about what the flow of work was going to be. So thanks for your patience on that. Some fun stuff. I think Max is opening on July 5. And then we had, I think, a ribbon cutting this afternoon with the MNI home, so that's really...
Oh.
Yeah.
I didn't even hear about that.
I didn't tell today, so...
I could add that Max is having a grand opening celebration next Friday, as well as the following Friday, so it coincides with the car show.
Next Friday, the 5th?
The 8th. Oh, so they're having a grand... I think they're going to be officially open for a small group of people in the public. That's just my understanding. Don't quote me on that. A soft opening, yes. And then the grand opening is just... It's my understanding it's going to be a party, so I don't know if everything's going to be completed as far as the construction goes, but they want to still hold the date. We've had it on the calendar since February. So I know there's going to be a band, and they have the outside patio, so it should be fun.
Okay.
And one more thing is, we're just looking at our ordinances to see if they're compatible with some outdoor seating, as we've talked, so... Yeah.
Is that mainly the liquor?
There is that component, and then kind of demarking the area, and then looking at, you know, how can we put the seating while honoring ADA and all those other components?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Anybody? Nope, because we're going to be meeting next week.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a full agenda, so we should get all our stuff out now?
It is a full agenda.
Okay, then, there's no other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move second.
Was that Rick and John?
Rick and John.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. We're adjourned at 7:06.
I'm not fast enough.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm going to be second every day.